Today's Planning Board meeting is starting late today due to a scheduling conflict. Our team was advised to publish a notice to inform everyone. We had the notice posted on our website and other means to communicate, and I apologize for anyone that came at the 10 o'clock timeframe, but nevertheless, we are here now. We will have a similar late start next week, and I believe we'll start around 1 o'clock next week if anyone has to come back again. With that, the time is now 2:31. I will call the September 11th Planning Board meeting to order. We have the following board members with us today. Commissioner Washington.
Good afternoon.
Who is virtually. Commissioner Geraldo.
Good afternoon, everyone.
And for the record, I am Chairman Barnes. We will now move forward to business at hand. Please note that the deadline for all participants pre-registration and all submission of material and exhibits was due 12 noon on Tuesday before the Planning Board meeting. Staff is available today to register folks or if you require any assistance. Please note that beginning October 2nd, 2025, the Planning Board meeting walk-ins, speakers, sign up will no longer be permitted. We will move forward with today's agenda. The order of cases today. Today's meeting is as follows. Items 2, 4D, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, 14, and 15 were removed. The next item on the agenda is item 2, draft minutes of September 4th. We look for a motion of approval of September 4th minutes.
Full approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. I will now call the role Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
And I vote aye as well. The ayes have it. We will move forward to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items, items 4D, final plat of subdivision 5-24084, library apartments, partial 1. Is there anyone who wishes to oppose the staff's recommendation of consent agenda items? Is there any board member who wishes to discuss these items? We look forward to approval of consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, after consideration of the record for item numbers 4D, I move adoption of staff findings and approval of the items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
I second that, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move into the relevant agenda items. The first item on the agenda is item 5, Community Planning Division Preliminary West Hyattsville Queen Chapel Sector Plan and Proposed Sectional Map Amendment.
This is the work session to review the testimony received at the joint public hearing. No additional testimonies will be heard. Planning Board has received five exhibits requesting the Board to accept additional evidence into the record more than 30 days following the joint public hearing. If any persons who submitted these five exhibits would like to present it orally, they would, they are allowed to do so per the zoning ordinance, but it is limited to the contents of their submission exhibit. We have staff members Thomas Lester and Justin Thornton, who will be present. Staff.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Board. I'm Thomas Lester, Project Manager in the Master Plans and Studies section of the Community Planning Division. I'll be walking you through the staff recommended changes based on the testimony to the third draft of the preliminary West Hyattsville Queen's Chapel Sector Plan and Proposed Sectional Map Amendment. Joining me today is Justin Thornton, the Deputy Project Manager, as well as Sarah Benton, Project Facilitator, and Tony Phelps, Community Planning Division Division Chief. The purpose of today's presentation is to review staff recommended changes based on the testimony received on the record as part of the joint public hearing held on July 1st, 2025. Next slide, please. Today's presentation will cover three key areas. First, I'll provide some background of what led to where we are in the process. Then Justin will walk through the staff's major recommended changes that staff are requesting be included in the resolutions of adoption and endorsement, highlighting the major points and the rationale behind them. And then finally, I'll close with the schedule outlining the next steps and the important dates moving forward. Next slide, please. Here's a short recap of what has occurred. On January 9th, 2025, the Planning Board remanded the second draft sector plan and proposed SMA back to staff for revision. On April 24th, 2025, we reached the permission to print milestone. The joint public hearing was then held on the third draft on July 1st, 2025. The Public Facilities Resolution was just approved by the District Council on September 9th, which brings us to today, September 11th, where the Planning Board is having its work session. Next slide, please. This slide shows the sector plan and the SMA boundary, which is primarily located within Planning Area 68. The area is entirely within Council Manic District 2 and includes a portion of the City of Hyattsville, Town of Brentwood, and the City of Mount Rainier. The northern boundary of the area is defined by the Prince George's Plaza Regional Transit District and the southern boundary of Butts, Washington, DC. Additionally, this area surrounds the boundary of the 2006 West Hyattsville Transit District Development Plan. Next slide, please. At the joint public hearing, we heard from 14 speakers and received 91 pieces of written testimony, which includes five late submissions. One of the most prominent issues raised was the proposed rezoning of RSF 65 to RSFA. Supporters highlighted the benefits of metro accessibility and the potential for tax-based growth. Opponents expressed broader concerns across multiple planned elements of the plan. We also received a specific request, again, from the Washington Gas asking that their property at 2130 Chilum Road be reclassified to the industrial employment zone. Beyond zoning, we heard strong support for the plan's overall comprehensive approach, particularly its focus on expanding housing options, improving walkability and bike access, and strengthening connections to the metro station. At the same time, some testimony raised concerns that the outreach process overlooked established homeowners most directly affected and instead focused more heavily on newer or outside residents. Next slide, please. We received five late submissions marked Exhibits T1 to T5, which includes a letter from the City of Hyattsville, additional petition signatures from the Avondale North Woodridge Citizens Association, an email from Ann Powell, a letter from the Prince George's County Health Department, and a letter from DP WNT on behalf of the County Executive's Office. Staff requests that the Planning Board allow testimony T1, T4, and T5 into the record under Section 27-3502-F3 of the zoning ordinance, which requires a motion by the Planning Board. Staff has already summarized and analyzed the late testimony in an addendum to the analysis of testimony. These exhibits came from government agencies in the City of Hyattsville and present new evidence that was not previously analyzed. The remainder of the late testimony, Exhibits T2 and T3, are appreciated. However, these exhibits do not provide any new evidence but mere testimony already submitted, which staff has already analyzed and has recommended changes based on the testimony. Also, as part of the Planning Board work session, the Planning Board also received three pieces of correspondence from the public. Staff reviewed the correspondence and does not consider the letters to be evidence and do not recommend adding them to the record to the joint public hearing. The first two letters reflect testimony already received and analyzed, and the third letter expressed general support of the resolution of adoption. Next slide, please. Overall, staff is recommending edits to seven out of the eight planned elements. No changes are recommended to the healthy community section. Most of the changes are relatively minor. However, staff wants to review the major changes outlined in the resolution of adoption and endorsement. I'll now turn it over to Justin to review those major changes.
Thank you, Thomas. Next slide. For land use and zoning, staff recommend adding the property at 3301 Chilum Road to the zoning change 10, since it is owned by the same owners as the Queen's Chapel Apartment Complex and should be included in future redevelopment. This also requires adding the subject property to the West Hyattsville Local Transit Center. Next slide. Staff recommend deleting land use policy LU 10.3 and zoning changes 31, 36, and 37. These changes would have rezoned nearly all RSF 65 properties to RSFA. Our reasoning is that it's premature to move forward with such broad rezonings. Instead, we should wait until the missing middle housing study and the early results from the ADU program are available. This will give us clearer data-driven guidance on how to introduce more housing diversity while maintaining stable neighborhoods. Next slide. For transportation and mobility, staff recommend updating and editing the existing conditions section, adding an introduction to complete and green streets, and including a call box for the East Coast Greenway. These changes will provide additional context for the recommendations, helping readers better understand the background and importance of the proposed improvements. Next slide. Staff recommend adding feasibility language to several transportation policies, specifically TM 1.15, TM 5.10, TM 5.13, TM 6.1, TM 8.1, TM 8.2, and TM 8.4, based on state highway agencies' requests. These revisions clarify that some recommended improvements will require further study by state highway administration before moving forward. This also means that some of these strategies may be deemed infeasible and never implemented. Next slide, please. Staff recommend adding Arundel Road and Varnum Street UC 254 to Strategies TM 3.1 to support its continued reconstruction as a complete green street. This change supports our coordinated planning efforts with the City of Mount Rainier, safe streets for all, granted grant-funded improvements along Varnum Street. Next slide. Staff recommend adding Strategies TM 4.14 to create a direct connection between the existing trail offshoot behind the Mount Rainier Nature Center, T 209, and the bicycle lane on UC 251 Buchanan Street. This change addresses a clear gap in the active transportation network and responds to community input from the City of Mount Rainier's requesting improved connectivity. Currently, the trail terminates at a sidewalk where on-street parking obstructs direct access to the bike lane, requiring cyclists to backtrack approximately 80 feet to reach the connection point. By extending the trail, adding a curb cut, and prohibiting parking at the connection, the strategy will ensure safe, continuous access for cyclists. Next slide. Staff recommend adding priority intersections within the City of Mount Rainier to TM 8.3, which recommends several intersection improvements for enhanced safety. This action item is listed in the Mount Rainier's Vision Zero Action Plan. Next slide. Staff recommend adding TM 8.5, which recommends automated speed enforcement for streets in the high accident network within the City of Mount Rainier, as is outlined in the city's Vision Zero Action Plan for from 2023. Next slide. Staff recommend adding Strategies TM 8.6 and HD 1.9, which recommend creating traffic calming and place-making features at two city gateways for the City of Mount Rainier. Both are action items listed in the Mount Rainier's Vision Zero Action Plan. Next slide. For housing and neighborhood, staff recommend the addition of a new strategy, HN 2.6. This strategy calls for evaluating the adequacy of existing public facilities to meet the needs of new housing development, while also ensuring that service provisions continue for existing housing. The justification for this recommendation is to reflect the concerns raised by existing residents who want to make sure that as housing increases, the community's public facilities, such as schools, parks, and infrastructure, can keep pace and continue to serve current households effectively. Next slide. Staff recommend adding Strategies HN 2.11. This strategy supports the county's right of refusal program, right of first refusal program by allowing the Department of Housing and Community Development to purchase multifamily rental housing to preserve long-term affordability for low to moderate income households. The justification for this recommendation is that it highlights and encourages the use of one of Prince George's County's most successful affordable housing tools and helps existing residents from displacement. Next slide. For community heritage, culture, and design, staff recommends adding Strategies HD 6.3 to initiate a coordinated effort with the Historic Preservation Section to evaluate the local historic district eligibility of the Avondale Grove and Avondale Terrace subdivisions, collectively known as Avondale. This action acknowledges community interests in preserving the area's architectural character and response to public testimony, highlighting its historical significance. If determined eligible and supported by residents, pursuing designation would help safeguard the neighborhood's character. And with that, I will hand it back to Thomas to provide an overview of the remaining schedule.
Thank you, Justin. Next slide, please. Now, review the schedule. Today, we're holding our work session with the Planning Board with the possibility of adoption endorsement of the plan and the SMA with staff's recommended changes. If adoption and endorsement do occur today, next up will be the District Council's work sessions, the first one scheduled in October, with a final approval date in November of 2025. Next slide. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
No questions.
Good.
I believe that there was one that had signed up that we already have your written petition, I mean Exhibit 4 of Padu. Would you like to present your exhibit orally?
I have one comment. Well, first of all, good afternoon, everyone. I appreciate the Avondale and Woodbridge being taken off the plan, obviously. I wanted to make a comment, a clarification for the record on something I noticed on the analysis testimony. Under 2B1, the analysis of testimony says that this session was in response to our claims that there was a lack of transparency between county officials that we weren't informed of the resulting changes. Under 2B1, the analysis of testimony notes that in response to our concerns about this lack of transparency...
If you can speak to your exhibit, which is T2.
I have to speak to my exhibit.
I thought I heard you say T1.
Sorry.
I thought I heard you say T1.
It's under 2B1, under the analysis of testimony for our case.
Okay, proceed.
I quote from the analysis of testimony that from according to the report, the report claims that it is also notable that previous...
One more thing. If you can introduce yourself and your...
My name's Pat Padwa. I'm president of the Avondale North Woodbridge Citizens Association. So in response to item 5 in the analysis of testimony under 2B1, under the analysis of testimony for our case, this is in response to community concerns about lack of transparency, and I'm quoting the analysis of testimony. It is also notable that previous testimony was received from the Avondale North Woodbridge Citizens Association, Exhibit 16, as far back as October 26, 2022, indicating that these outreach efforts reached the targeted neighborhoods, at least to some degree. Now, I object to that description of what happened because the 2022 letter refers to the second draft of the SMA, which although did indicate that CC 36, which encompasses Avondale North Woodbridge, was part of the range of the broad sector plans. At that date, the second draft would not have any proposal for rezoning from RSF 65 to RSFA. And the first time the community heard about the proposed zoning of CC 36 from RSF 65 to RSFA was in the notice for the July 1st, 2025 hearing that was mailed out around May 12th this year. So I continue, I contend that, I'm concerned that the Planning Board continues to insist that the zoning changes were properly communicated because they showed up on the draft and the third draft without any input from the community. It's my understanding that residents in Queen's Chapel Manor were given the opportunity to attend a home house and workshop, some kind of workshop, while we didn't hear anything until the notice went out from hearing and we met with the Planning Board afterwards. But that is my point of contention with the changes. So that's his point.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I believe that there was one other person, but emailed her opposition, Ann Powell. Seeing that she is not here, are there any other question?
No question, Mr. Chairman, but it appears that there's, someone is virtual who is inquiring about commenting. I don't know if they're signed up, but I'm just flagging that.
I'll be in the chat.
If someone...
Yeah, there's one.
And your name?
Chair, Lisa Coleman, Senior Counsel. I just want to remind everyone that this is not a public hearing. This is a work session, so we're not taking additional testimony. There were several exhibits that were submitted, and the limit of their testimony that would be allowed would be just to present their exhibit orally. So if you did not submit an exhibit that is being considered for addition to the record, we will not be interviewing with those individuals.
Are there any questions, Board?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, seeing none, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I have two motions, one with respect to late testimony and the second to provide direction to staff. And so with that, I move that we adopt the recommendation of staff and include Exhibits T1, T4, and T5 into the record as additional evidence.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington and seconded by Commissioner Bailey. I would now call the role Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
And I vote aye as well. We will now move to the next agenda.
Mr. Chair, I have a second, second motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the analysis and recommendation of staff and direct staff to finalize the resolution of adoption for the Preliminary West Hyattsville Queen's Chapel Sector Plan Draft 3 and resolution of endorsement of the Proposed Sectional Map Amendment Draft 3.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move to the next item on the agenda, item 6, Community Planning Division Resolution of Adoption for the Preliminary West Hyattsville Queen Chapel Sector Plan and Resolution of Endorsement for the Proposed Sectional Map Amendment. This is a same-day resolution for Preliminary West Hyattsville Queen Chapel Sector Plan and Proposed Sectional Map Amendment. All members, any deliberation, and if not, what's your pleasure?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
A second app.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item 7, Preliminary Plan of Subdivision 4-24011, Lisa Apostle Church. I will now open it up for the hearing. We have staff members, Marsha, who will present the...
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I'm in the board. My name is Martha Watanous with the subdivision section. Item number 7 on the agenda is the Preliminary Plan of Subdivision 4-24011 for Eglisea Evangelica Apostolic Church. This subdivision proposes one parcel for approximately 6,887 square feet of institutional development. The project is supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, case number ADQ-2024-014. Staff has not received any exhibits or correspondence prior to the noon deadline on September 9th, 2025. Based on the findings presented in the technical staff report, the subdivision staff recommends that the Planning Board approves the preliminary of subdivision 4-24011 and type 1 tree conservation plan, TCP 1-018-2025, as well as the variance to Section 25-122B1G, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. This concludes the staff's presentation. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the Planning Board?
I have none.
Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney. Tracy.
Good afternoon, Chairman Barnes, members of the Planning Board.
Quickly, let's get you sworn in. You and anyone who intends to testify in this evidentiary hearing, please raise your hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Barnes, members of the Planning Board and staff. For the record, my name is Tracy Scudder. I'm with the law firm Reesbroome with new offices at the National Harbor. Since I'm the first up today, I would just like to extend a very warm welcome to you, Chairman Barnes, in your new role as the Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board. And I think I can speak on behalf of the entire land use and zoning bar and saying congratulations. This afternoon, I have the pleasure of representing Eglisea Evangelica Apostles Church, the applicant in this case for Preliminary Plan of Subdivision. The applicant is represented by Anna Diaz, and she's seated behind me. I would like to start by thanking Ms. Fontanous for picking up this case and making the presentation today. We agree with all the information that was just presented to the Board. We've also had an opportunity to review the technical staff report and concur with the findings and recommendations to include the conditions of approval. I'm going to keep my comments brief today out of respect for your full agenda, and I will wrap up my presentation by saying that the church is looking forward to moving on to the next application, which is the detailed site plan. So this means that you will see us again when the time comes for the Planning Board hearing in that case. At this time, I will close by respectfully requesting that the Planning Board approve case number 4-24011, TCP 1-018, 2025, and the requested variance. Thank you, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions from the Planning Board?
I have none.
Was Ms. Diaz speaking?
No, sir. No more speakers.
Very good. Is there a motion from the Planning Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve Preliminary Plan 4-24011, TCP 1-018-2025, and variance to Section 25-122B1G, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number 8, Preliminary Plan of Subdivision PPS-2023-016, Hyde Landing. We will now hear from Marsha.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Martha Watanous with the subdivision section. Item number 8 on the agenda is the Preliminary Plan of Subdivision for Hyde Landing, PPS-2023-011.
Next slide, please. This site is located in the southwestern part of Prince George's County within Planning Area eighty-one B and Council District Nine. Next slide, please. More specifically, the site outlined here in red is located on the now northwest side of Piscataway Road and its intersection with Steed Road. Next slide, please. The zoning map shows that the site outlined on this slide in red is Zoned Residential Plant Development RPD. The subject site is bounded to the north by residential uses and undeveloped land in the residential estate and preserve open space zones. To the east, it's bounded by undeveloped land and residential uses in the residential rural zone. Piscataway Road abuts the property to the south with undeveloped land and agricultural uses in RE zone. And the west of the property is undeveloped and industrial uses in RE zone. Next slide, please. The site shows that, this slide shows that the overlay zones, which indicates the property, is located in aviation policy areas one, two, three, five, and six, associated by the former Washington Executive Airport. Next slide, please. The master plan right-of-way map shows that the three master plant roadways impact the subject site. Piscataway Road classified as an arterial roadway, Steed Road, and C dash five one eight classified as collector roadways. Next slide, please. This slide specifically shows the bird's eye view of the property. The site is currently improved with an airport and has been subject to previous sand and gravel minding activities. Both the mining and airfield operations have completely ceased at this time. Next slide, please. This preliminary plan of subdivision proposes to subdivide the property into nine hundred six slots and one hundred seventy parcels for development of one thousand two hundred eighty-eight residential units and up to sixty-nine thousand a square feet of commercial, utility, and community service uses. This overall view of the preliminary plan of subdivision shows the layout of the proposed lots and parcels with the property boundary outlined in red, existing public rights away in light blue. Public and private roads are proposed within the preliminary plan to access the proposed lots and parcels. The plan reflects the road dedication along Piscataway and Steed Road to meet the minimum requirements of master plan of transportation. This preliminary plan is associated with an approved certificate of adequacy, ADQ dash two zero two three dash zero three two, which was approved in accordance with the subdivision regulations to ensure that infrastructure necessary to support the proposed development are adequate in accordance with established level of service standards. The applicant requested a variation from section twenty-four dash four two zero five of the subdivision regulations to modify the standard ten-foot wide public utility easement. The requested variation and staff analysis are further detailed on pages fifteen through eighteen of the technical staff report. The applicant has also requested a variation from lot depth requirement of section twenty-four dash four one zero two C one with the staff analysis provided in details on pages thirty-three through thirty-seven of the technical staff report. Next slide, please. This slide shows the access and circulation on the property. The preliminary plan proposes three access points along Piscataway Road, two full movement access points for the residential component, and one riding out for the commercial access. The plan also proposes two full movement access points along Steed Road to facilitate movements for the residential and commercial components of the development. The proposed development proposes a series of pathways on both sides of all new road construction, a trail system throughout the site and ten-foot wide share-use paths along the site frontage of Piscataway Road and Steed Road. Next slide, please. This slide shows the location of open space and recreation areas. The active recreation areas are highlighted in red and the passive recreation areas are highlighted in yellow. The natural features are highlighted in light purple. Next slide, please. This slide specifically shows the location of recreation facility area highlighted in blue and illustrates their distribution throughout the subdivision. The trail system is also depicted on this slide, shown with an orange line, which is provided as a public benefit pursuant to the zoning approval for the property under ZMA dash two zero two two dash zero zero five for the rezoning of the property. Next slide, please. This slide shows the access and circulation on the property. The preliminary plan proposes three access points along Piscataway Road, two full movement access points for the residential component, and one riding out for the commercial access. The plan also proposes two full movement access points along Steed Road to facilitate movements for the residential and commercial components of the development. The proposed development proposes a series of pathways on both sides of all new road construction, a trail system throughout the site and ten-foot wide share-use paths along the site frontage of Piscataway Road and Steed Road. Next slide, please. This slide shows the location of open space and recreation areas. The active recreation areas are highlighted in red and the passive recreation areas are highlighted in yellow. The natural features are highlighted in light purple. Next slide, please. This slide specifically shows the location of recreation facility area highlighted in blue and illustrates their distribution throughout the subdivision. The trail system is also depicted on this slide, shown with an orange line, which is provided as a public benefit pursuant to the zoning approval for the property under ZMA dash two zero two two dash zero zero five for the rezoning of the property. Next slide, please. This slide shows that the three one three conservation plan with the proposed onsite woodland preservation areas highlighted in dark green and the woodland reforestation areas highlighted in light green. The woodland conservation requirements have been met onsite. Woodland conservation and staff analysis are further detailed on pages twenty-six of the technical staff report. The primary management area is shown on this slide in purple line. Proposed impacts to the PMA are indicated on this slide by the letters A to I. The requested primary management area impacts and staff analysis are further detailed on pages twenty-nine through thirty-one of the technical staff report. The applicant has requested a variance from section twenty-five dash one two two B one G, which requires preservation of specimen trees. This preliminary plan of subdivision proposes the removal of four specimen trees on the site, the location of which are shown by the red circles on this slide. This variance request is supported by required findings for approval and discussed further in the environmental findings on pages twenty-six to twenty-nine of the technical staff report. Next slide, please. As mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, staff received three exhibits submitted by the applicant as additional backup materials for this preliminary plan of subdivision. In first exhibit, exhibit number one, the applicant requested a revision to condition fifteen regarding the timing of the submittal of the performance bond for the proposed trail. Staff have reviewed the proposed revisions and are in agreement with the revised language. The second exhibit, exhibit number two, is a memorandum of law concerning the approved certificate of adequacy, ADQ dash two zero two three dash zero three two for this property. However, the certificate of adequacy was approved in accordance with section twenty-four dash four five zero three and has not been appealed and is not before the planning board for consideration today. In third exhibit, exhibit number three, is detailed information regarding the Hyde Landing website, which may be further discussed by the applicant. In conclusion, the subdivision staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve the preliminary plan of subdivision, PPS dash two zero two three dash zero one six, type one tree conservation plan, TCP one dash zero zero four dash two zero one five dash zero one, as the variation request to section twenty-four dash four one zero two C one and section twenty-four dash four two zero five and variance request from section twenty-five dash one two two B one G, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff, in the staff report as modified by applicant's exhibit one. This concludes the staff's presentation. Thank you.
You did an outstanding job. That was a lot. And we only have one person to blame for that who's about to come up. Uh, any, any questions from the planning board for staff?
None here.
Uh, seeing none, uh, before you start, Mr. Tedesco, legal, if you could come in and anyone else that is, uh, intending to testify.
Yes, if anyone is here, can you please stand, raise your right hand? Do you finally swear our firm that the testimony?
Mrs. Fontenous?
Mr. Tedesco.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, Matthew Tedesco, the law firm of McNamee-Hosey in Greenbelt, Prince George's County, here on behalf of Hyde Field Acquisition LLC, which is a subsidiary of NVR Inc. With me this afternoon in person, we have Mr. Patrick Donahue, who is the Regional Vice President of Land, and online, we have Ms. Jessica McMahon, who is the marketing, market manager. I want to thank Ms. Fontenous for her excellent presentation for a very complex project. If only the presentation, if the work leading up to the presentation was as succinct and efficient as the presentation, my life would be a little bit easier. But notwithstanding, thank you, Ms. Fontenous, for your review, Ms. Connor, for your divisions review, um, as well as the supervisor of the subdivision section, Madhula Gupta's review of this application, as well as all your agencies. This is a, a very large project. It's a legacy project in the county. It has a very long, uh, somewhat undistinguished history, which we are changing that narrative with each application that comes before you. And I am so very honored and proud to stand before you on behalf of this wonderful team that we have, represented here today by Rogers Consulting, Mr. Charlie Howes, our expert civil engineer, Mr. Christine Gillette, who is our expert landscape architect, Mr. Rob Swam, our expert environmental project manager, and although not here, Mr. Alex Vajagis, uh, Mr. Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Traffic and Consulting, our expert traffic engineer. From my team, Dominic Lockher, our senior land planner, um, Mr. Michael German from Holly Ridge Development is also with us. Um, Mr. Monroe Harrison from GS Proctor and Associates, who have done a Herculean task of our community outreach, which I'm going to go into. Uh, but we all can't do it alone. Mr. Harrison also is supported by Tatiana Alson and Jackie Brown and Mr. Steve Proctor. My gratitude of this development team, as well as this applicant team, extends also to the citizens. A lot of whom may not be here today, some are either online or in person, some of whom have submitted written testimony. You have that in your additional backup from Mr. and Mrs. Brown and from Pastor Robinson. To say we've had countless hours of meetings is, is an understatement of the, of the year. Both commitments from the community, commitments from the applicant, commitments from this development team. Um, I did not submit an exhibit like we did for the rezoning application, which this body supported back in February of two thousand twenty-four. Um, at least two of the members may recall. Mr. Chairman, I know you're seeing this case for the first time, but I'm hopeful that you are as supportive as well as, um, accepting of the efforts of this team, as well as the community leaders that have participated in it. I do have a breakdown. However, if you just indulge me, I won't go through every single meeting date. Uh, but to say that it's, uh, robust will be, like I said, an understatement. Um, going back to two thousand twenty-two, we, we had at least four, if not more, meetings with Steeds Glen. Steeds Glen is the community just to the northeast of this property. Uh, we had a meeting with, uh, Pennington Estates, Windbrook, at least three or four meetings with them, Sirats Garden, Hill and Trey Estates, Tippet Road, uh, the Miller Farm, Mary Catherine Community. We've had meetings with, with individuals within, in their basements, Mr. Ray Butler, um, Mr. Les Greenberg. We have had, uh, we have met with the South County Community Roundtable. We've had three pre-application neighborhood meetings for the zoning map amendment, the preliminary plan, and more recently, the detailed site plan for infrastructure. In total, we've had more than sixteen, eighteen community meetings over the course of the last three years on this project. That was purposeful. Um, this property has a very long history. Um, it was originally rezoned to a comprehensive design zone that facilitated more than two thousand residential units, more than two hundred, uh, more, almost three hundred thousand square feet of commercial retail. We came in with a rezoning and a new vision to actually, hopefully one day, and we believe we're well on our way, and this will actually be the project that does it, implement, um, a development scheme for this property that's long overdue and this area of the county is desperately in need of. However, these community meetings were important because this amount of density at that location, for which it's always been an airfield. Um, I gratuitously give personal examples of projects, and, um, this one is near and dear to me as well as many are. My father was the commanding officer, Police District Five, when I was in, you know, a young kid in the late eighties and early nineties, and we would go there and watch the planes take off and have lunch. I remember it fondly. Um, so do these residents. Um, unfortunately, these residents in this part of the county have struggled with transportation improvements. And by that, I mean they've had none, really none to speak of. And so when we came in or any project that's come in, the biggest issue has always been and will always be traffic as it relates to this project and the surrounding projects. So we undertook the effort to get out in front of that, meet with the community, and create a win-win. And the win-win facilitated itself with the new zoning warrants that, that allowed us to rezone the property to a planned development zone that offered public benefits in exchange for flexibility of development. Those public benefits were primarily outlined in the, in the basic plan that was previously approved um, by this body and ultimately by the district council, but are reflective in this plan. And Ms. Fontenous hit on some of them a moment ago. All of the right-of-way dedication for this, uh, for the road improvements are coming from this property. Typically, developer or applicant properties will dedicate a half section of the roadway to facilitate that frontage improvement. We're dedicating all of it to make the widening necessary to put in the road improvements on Piscataway Road. Significantly, we are doing a intersection improvement at Steed and Piscataway. Mr. Lenhart's here. If you have needed information on it, um, we can go into great length of what those are. Part of the exhibits that we provided is exhibit three, which is a copy of, of the entire Hyde Landing website that we created, in particular to inform the community. And within that, among many things, are the road improvement plans that we will be doing with this project. Um, we will also be making financial contributions to another intersection further east, which, uh, euphemistically is referred to as the BK Miller Intersection, Old Branch and two twenty-three, probably one of the worst intersections in the county to date. Thankfully and happily, I can report there is a developer participation agreement executed by the county, executed by another property owner and developer. It's, uh, partially, uh, county-state funded as well as developer-funded, and that project is moving. Uh, this, this project will contribute more than two and a half million dollars to that road improvement project. So what came of all those meetings and, and given the uniqueness of this property and the specialty of this property, is we did something very unique. And in my twenty-one years of, of practicing land use in the county, I don't think, uh, I, I have, we have not done this before, but it hopefully. I have, we have not done this before, but it, hopefully, for projects of this magnitude, it becomes the norm, not the exception. We created a stakeholder group, and we actively engaged with about a dozen community leaders in, in and around this area, from various civic associations, homeowners associations, many of whom I referenced before. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge them by name, because we wouldn't be here without them. Mr. Les Greenberg, Mr. Ray Butler, Tamara Davis Brown, Michael Brown, Renidia Brown, Mr. and Mrs. Brown from Hill and Trey Estates, Erica Cheeks, Jerome Tidwell, Yolanda Taylor, Sandy Miller, Pastor Robinson from Truia Life, Adam Penny, and Pat O'Neil. We've probably had eight to ten stakeholder meetings. And what those meetings accomplished primarily dealt with the rezoning, but also laid the roadmap for what we're here today to talk about, which is the plumery plan subdivision, and ultimately, what we'll be here to talk to you about, hopefully, in the next few months, was the detailed site plan for infrastructure. And then after that, the detailed site plan for the actual project, which will be phased, and we'll have many of those detailed site plans. So I hope you're not getting tired of me just yet. You'll see me more. But this is the epitome of a project for which it was a private, I'll say, public in the sense of the community involvement. Does every single community member in Clinton know about it? No. We did our level best. We've, we've done what we can. A lot of these community leaders took the information back to their communities and dispersed it, kind of a divide and conquer approach. But there are still some that we hear from, and hey, that's too dense. It's too, it's too much. What about the roads? What about the schools? What, all these things. And we, we've cited them to, well, we'll meet with them, of course, but we cite them to the website. The website has more information than most project websites do. We have question and answers from the pre-application neighborhood meetings posted on there. We have the site plans. We have the road improvement plans. We have the public benefit plans. We have the trails. We have all the information there. If anybody wanted to take the time to familiarize themselves with this project, and then a future project down the road known as the Grove, it's all right there for them to do Turning to the project itself, from its inception, this development team came up with key themes and elements to align and strategize with the purposes of the RPD Zone, the county's master plans and functional master plans, the county's climate action plan, and then the housing study, the Housing for All. We envision a neighborhood visioning for investment, beautification, transformation, including mobility, neighborhood character and quality. This applicant voluntarily participated in the MDE VCP program, voluntary cleanup program. It was, it is a decommissioned airfield, but it was previously an airfield for decades. As you can imagine, there was contaminated soils. Nothing that we didn't expect, mostly fuel contamination. Participated, didn't have to, participated voluntarily in the, in the MDE program. All that's been remediated. It's all complete. It's done. Piscataway and Steed Road beautification, although not necessarily your main here, you saw images back with the rezoning, and you'll see much more at the time of detailed site plan, but the entire improvement of Piscataway Road, currently, you drive up and down Piscataway Road, this property is an eyesore. It's old hangers, some of which the lean-tos have been razed, thankfully, but it's, there's not much there. I dare say, residents of this area probably use it as a landmark and not in a good way. We're going to change that. We're going to change that. Trails, sidewalks, both sides, bike lanes, berms, landscaping, and you'll see all that with the detailed site plan. Hundred percent woodland conservation on site, context-sensitive and compatible residential character, renewable energy. Part of this, not necessarily before you, because it's under the mandatory referral process that this board has already approved and through the state, but part of the project is a solar generating facility that will contribute to the community solar program. Not only residents of this community, if they would elect to, but throughout the region, can participate in the community solar program, so have Nat Green Initiative solar generation associated with the areas that will give back to the grid. Parks and Recreation amenities, as Ms. Van Dus indicated, a hundred and nine acres are being conveyed to the Parks and Commission for Stream Valley Park. Community clubhouse, there'll be an element of the community clubhouse that will be facilitated for the community outside of this specific community to rent space. A lot of those details have to come into picture, but we've committed that to, to community. There's just a lack of meeting space in this part of the county. A linear park and a dog park. Public use of a portion of the clubhouse for civic space, I mentioned that, conveyance of a hundred acres and various amenities. You saw a slide that had the various amenity parcels associated with it. All those will be amenitized, and you'll see that at the time of detailed site plan. A community vision, environmental, as I mentioned, the brownfield VCP cleanup that we participated in. Implementation of the climate action plan with solar, EV infrastructure, water quality through ESD, flood controls, replanting of more than five thousand trees on site. Tinkers Creek conveyance to the commission and on-site woodland conservation. Of course, housing, twelve hundred and eighty-eight units, that's the ceiling. That's approved by the basic plan. That is, however, a reduction of seven hundred and seventy-two units from the previously zoned property and the previously approved basic plans. We anticipate units that will offer first, first-floor living and universal design for certain residents to age in place, and that's primarily the northwestern part of the project. In response to the community input, and at significant financial detriment to the applicant, the original plan for this project contemplated not only the twelve hundred and eighty-eight attached units, but also a multifamily component. We withdrew the multifamily component at the urgency of the community. Another example of working with the community to create a win-win. We believe that the county is already woefully below its goal of needing five thousand two hundred and fifty units by the, by the end of this year. This project will help facilitate much-needed housing in the, in the county. The economic impact, we, as part of the basic plan, we did, we did do an economic fiscal impact for this project. That was part of the backup for the basic plan that you guys could take notice of at pages seventy-seven to ninety-six, but it will support local economy and commercial businesses through additional rooftops. The local community investment is approximated at four hundred and twenty-one point seven million dollars in direct and indirect outlays, fifty-five point six million per year in increased consumer spending, one thousand five hundred and fifty workers for the project, ninety-three point nine million in direct earnings for the project, for the workers. Four hundred and twenty local full-time jobs are expected. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your indulgence. Let me go through that. I felt it was important. A lot of that was shared at the time of the basic plan, but for your benefit, we wanted to just highlight some of those key points. As Ms. Van Dus indicated, we did have applicants exhibit two, which was a memorandum of law, basically for the preservation of legal and constitutional rights associated with the police response time test. I understand that the ADQ is not before you. However, just for the preservation of our rights and the record, and notwithstanding the execution of the mitigation agreement and the ADQ conditions that have been approved and that have not been appealed, the applicant expressly does not waive any legal objections or rights to later appeal or challenge the police response time tests and mitigation agreement resulting from the ADQ conditions. We explicitly reserve all rights to challenge the validity, illegality, and constitutionality of the application of the police response time test and imposition of the conditions in the mitigation agreement. Acceptance of the ADQ conditions and execution of the mitigation agreement is made solely to avoid the only alternative imposition of unconstitutional conditions that would result in the undue delay or obstruction of the underlying project and approval of this plumery plan. Mr. Chairman, the subdivision regulations under section twenty-four three four oh two, the proposed layout establishes a strong and logical relationship between the lots, the streets, and open space. It complies with all the applicable design standards and ensures safe, adequate access for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles. The site is supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, demonstrating conformance with the public facility adequacy requirements. It's consistent with Plan 2035 and the applicable master plan. Plan 2035 calls for context-sensitive, low- to medium-density development in the established communities. With a density of three point zero eight dwelling units per acre, Hyde Landing is within, within the three point five units per acre cap envisioned by the master plan. The project delivers master plan roadways, bicycle and pedestrian investments, stream valley preservation, and a community clubhouse, all consistent with both Plan 2035 and the Subregion Five master plan. The rezoning of, of the property to the RPD Zone established the suitability of this property for a comprehensively planned residential community. This plan implements those entitlements, with a variety of housing types, including active adult units that promote aging in place. Environmental and parkland dedication, the plumery plan preserves high-value stream valleys and specimen trees. There, there is a request for a variance to remove four specimen trees. I would highlight, though, there are eighty-four specimen trees on site, all of which are being preserved. While providing on-site woodland conservation and afforestation, the applicant will be conveying a hundred and nine point three two acres of Stream Valley Park, and will be building seven thousand three hundred and seventy linear feet of trails, exceeding the mandatory dedication requirements. Ms. Van Dus went through the variations and the variance requests, so I will, I will just incorporate and adopt those to save on time. We will further incorporate and adopt as our testimony the various statement of justifications that have been submitted in this case. And in conclusion, we believe and contend that this plumery plan meets all applicable statutory and regulatory standards. It is consistent with the general plan, as well as the master plan, complies with subtitle twenty-four and subtitle twenty-seven, provides significant environmental and recreational benefits, and fulfills the prior zoning conditions of approval. Hyde Landing is a model for responsible redevelopment, transforming a former mine and airfield into a sustainable, walkable, multi-generational community, one that I know and hope that all of us one day will be very proud of. With that, Mr. Chairman, we will reserve any further time for any rebuttal. I know there are probably some citizens that are either online or here. I, I do want to thank Pastor Robinson and Mr. and Mrs. Brown, who could not be here, but for submitting their letter, which I think captures the efforts this applicant team, as well as the community members as part of our stakeholder group, facilitated to get to where we are today. But notwithstanding that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your indulgence. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the commissioner's time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that would like to testify, who have signed up. I believe all of the people in favor of this or support this are part of your group.
The, yes, Mr. Chairman, there was one exception. It was Mr. Les Greenberg did sign up. He is a resident and not part of the applicant team. I don't know if he's online. I think he registered to speak online. Other than that, all the other signees, folks that signed up are with the applicant team, and would only need to speak if there are questions or rebuttal.
Yeah, no. I believe that there are a couple that have signed up in opposition. Is James Harley here?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. If you can state your, your name and your address for the-
My name is James Frederick Harley, seventy-seven oh three Cambarra Place, Clinton, Maryland.
Yes, sir.
Former commissioner of park and planning.
He's over here.
I'm against this project because the last time we saw, looked at this, when I was a commissioner, they tried to force a ten-year-old traffic study as part of their development. And I'm interested today to find out when was the last traffic study done for this Because it is ten years old, it's not good. The traffic in that area is terrible. Every day, in the morning, middle of the day, and the afternoon, Piscataway Road is full-
It's full of traffic.
And it's not just Prince George's County traffic, it's Charles County traffic coming up Piscataway Road to get off of Branch Avenue. So I'm against the project because if you're going to put a twenty-four hundred, housing, that's twenty, that's forty-eight hundred more vehicles on the road every day, going and coming, and we don't need that out there. It's bad enough as it is.
Got it. Thank you so much, Mr. Harley.
Thank you.
Brad Miller.
Mr. Miller, I didn't see that you were sworn in, so-
Oh, I'm sorry.
-do you sign with me now? Thank you. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I affirm, yes.
You have two minutes.
Good afternoon. I am a seventh-generation farmer, living right across the street at Miller Farms. As Mr. Harley was referring to, the traffic is awful. We cannot get in to our farm. We cannot get out of our farm. We're driving tractors up and down the road. We have picking wagons that have been run into the back of. There have been at least four car accidents in the last year, right out front of our place. Not only that, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of people, it's a lot of cars, the traffic's bad already, and I find it a little disingenuous to think that we need to support a huge development across the street to get a little bit of right-of-way on the other side of the street, and a couple of traffic signals to think that that's going to fix all of the problems associated with the traffic there. You know, this, this development is also going to raise the property values of, of, in the area, which is good if you're, you know, a landowner, but if you're trying to purchase land and trying to keep land and preserve land, it kind of prices you out. And this makes it hard for folks like me to try to preserve and keep our farm, our way of life. I feel like this development will come in, and we will have, we're just going to have family members that don't live or work there, that will then decide to say, hey, you know what? Let me sell. And they're going to get a huge offer from these developers, and it will become a domino effect, and our farm will go. That's my biggest concern. I cherish my way of life. I love my work, and it's already starting to happen. And so that's why I'm in opposition to this development.
Thank you. Adrian Crow, uh, Crowell.
Ms. Crowell, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I do have some concerns. I am not in support of this construction, because even though the adequate response time has not been contested, there is going to be an impact, because Piscataway Road, east and west, is already, as you have heard, is extremely congested, to the point where it's a chore and a misery just getting out of my subdivision to go down the street. It, it takes ten minutes just to get through the lights. The lights are not synchronized, and so, you know, I look at Charles County, we can go down Crane and, you know, for four or five minutes and not encounter a light, but that's not true with Piscataway. It's just a sardine, and this is just going to make it, just going to exacerbate it even more. It also proposes bike lanes that dead-end, they're not contiguous along two-two-three, and that in itself is a safety hazard, because we've had numerous accidents and fatalities along that corridor. In addition, it fails to address the educational needs of the children that's going to be coming into the property, not mitigated by the addition of another school or childcare facilities on the property. It's not supported by public transit. It should be proposed near Metro Center, and the greenhouse gases resulting from this traffic further erodes our air quality, which has a negative global environmental effect to our health and our safety. So we're already, we can't breathe, okay? So the turn lanes that they propose do not take the preceding concerns into, into consideration and only support that subdivision, as well as the, as well as those sidewalks they're talking about. So those are my reasons. I am vice president of the Sarats Gardens Community Association. I have attended one of those meetings, and I still stand in opposition of this construction. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Crowell. Phillips Lacy.
Mr. Lacy, have you been sworn in?
Do it again.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Philip Lacy. I'm a neighbor to the development. My property backs on Steed Road. When I first saw the project in the meetings, for some reason, I'm an architect- When I first saw the project in the meetings, for some reason, I'm an architect licensed in the state of Maryland for forty years. I saw the plan, I didn't realize the amount of houses. And as a resident, it seems like we're trapped. In order to get new roads, new sidewalks, we have to accommodate up to four thousand more people with traffic. So at this juncture, I can't support the project.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, are there any questions for those that have spoken?
No questions, but I thank them for their participation and comments.
Thank you. If not, we'll hear back from Mr. Tedesco.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, is Mr. Les Greenberg on the line? He was signed up in support, I just want to give him an opportunity to view, I don't know if he's there or not.
No.
No, okay, very well. I rarely stand before you acknowledging the traffic on two-twenty-three, up and down two-twenty-three is, is not good. And so I sympathize and empathize with the community members who live with that every single day. It was precisely why I took the time to go through our efforts with the community to articulate our job to actually make improvements. And part of the public benefits package with this rezoning was not just simply paying into the CIP, Capital Improvement Program, which the law allows. The law allows for developer participation, for a one-hundred percent developer-funded CIP to pay, and that meets adequacy. We knew that was not going to be acceptable here. We knew it from day one. We told our client, that's not going to be acceptable. If that's what you plan to do, you've got the wrong team. We need to come up with a game plan to actually make road improvements. Can we fix all seven intersections within the South County CIP? No. Not one, not any one project can do that. But can we fix Steed and Piscataway? Can we fix the frontage? Can we fix Steed? Can we have the, one of the largest financial contributions to BK Miller? Yes. And still make the project viable? Yes. Let's do it. And that's what we did. The ADQ has been approved. It's not germane to this hearing, however, because the testimony provided, the opposition testimony indicated their belief that our improvements aren't gonna do much. If the board wishes, Mr. Michael Lenhart is here, and he can summarize those improvements, not from an adequacy standpoint, because that's already been approved, but just from an operational standpoint, so you all know the actual benefit, that, that intersection improvement that we will do at Steed and two-twenty-three, the widening we will do on Piscataway Road, the widening we will do on Steed Road, what that actually will do, he's here to present that information, if you guys want, I'll defer to the board.
What's his name?
Michael Lenhart.
Yeah, I love you.
With that, Mr. Chair, if I may, Ms. Coleman, I do have Mr. Lenhart's CV. Can I have that presented as, he's an expert in the field? So Mr. Lenhart's been previously qualified as an expert in the field of traffic engineering. His CV is here. Give it to you, or?
If you can.
May I first?
Then I'll pass it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Michael Lenhart, for the record. So to Matt's point, I'd like to just talk very briefly about some of the improvements we're providing. There are capacity and congestion issues that occur today, absolutely. Two-twenty-three at Steed Road has one through lane in each direction on Route two-twenty-three. Our improvements are gonna widen that, so there'll be a second through lane in both directions along two-twenty-three. Substantial distance, it'll open up before the intersection, it'll carry through the intersection, then it'll merge back down. It's gonna be an extensive improvement that meets state highway guidelines. Steed Road today at the two-twenty-three intersection is one lane at the traffic signal. If you're coming out, it's, it's a shared left and a right turn lane. There's a shoulder that is in poor condition that people use as a right turn lane, but it's not a right turn lane. We're gonna widen Steed Road to three lanes. We're gonna have a free right turn coming off of Steed Road. There're gonna be dramatic improvements at that intersection. With regards to the Miller Farm and the difficulties getting in and out of that location, we recognize that. The meetings that we had with the community, that was one of the issues that was raised, as well as Tippet Road at two-twenty-three. There are no turn lanes on two-twenty-three today, so if you're driving south along two-twenty-three, you wanna turn left into Miller Farm or left into Tippet Road. When you stop, you wait for a gap to make your left turn, and while you're stopped, there is no bypass lane, through traffic backs up behind you. We're gonna widen two-twenty-three throughout the entire frontage of Miller Farm and through Tippet Road and beyond Tippet Road along the entire frontage of this property. So it'll be a center-left turn lane for turns into Miller Farm, into Tippet Road, so that will no longer block through traffic. It eliminates the congestion associated with that, eliminates rear-end concerns. Not only that, but Maryland law allows left turns from the minor street to turn into a center-left turn lane. And so people coming out of Miller Farm, coming out of Tippet, when they wanna make a left, they can turn into the center-left turn lane. They only have to look for a gap to the left, they turn into the lane, then they look for a gap in through traffic, and they merge in. These are in operation all over the state, they work very well at reducing congestion and improving operations and safety. So there are substantial improvements that will improve the ability to get in and out of these, these locations. And we thank the community for working with us because they've identified some of these things that we brought to the table.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Lenhart?
Mr. Chair, I just have one. If Mr. Lenhart, for benefit of the residents that are here, can you just expound upon how far the widening of the roads will go? Is it just gonna be in front of the project or the development, or is it gonna extend?
There will be widening along Piscataway Road for the extent of the Hyde Field Airport. So all the way to the southern limit, we're gonna widen, we'll have five-foot bike lanes on both sides of two-twenty-three. Today, there is no shoulder, no bike lanes. Five-foot bike lanes both sides. We'll have a center-turn lane that runs the entirety of the site and through Tippet and through the Miller Farm. And then as you get between Tippet and Steed, we're gonna widen Piscataway out to two through lanes each direction through the signal, and then probably about a thousand feet beyond the signal, we'll begin to merge those back down into one through lane.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Questions?
Just to conclude, Mr. Chairman, and that widening is gonna be, it's a length of a mile. I mean, you can imagine, this was an airfield, it had a runway, it's gonna be a length of a mile. There are other projects, you know, potentially down the pipeline that will hopefully continue that widening, so you'll see improvements, and, and that's, that's a fairly significant improvement. Mr. Harley's here, and I want to recognize Mr. Harley, thank you for coming today and testifying. It's been a while since I've seen Mr. Harley, but certainly have known Mr. Harley for many decades. I do want to be responsive to his question as far as when the traffic study was done. The traffic study for this application was done in January of 2025, so it's, it's within this year. It's not whatever was previously referenced before from another project or application. It was precisely done for this application within this calendar year. And then finally, Ms. Crowell indicated or made a comment about childcare. Part of this application, and Ms. Vatan-Duce hit on it, the sixty-nine-thousand square feet of commercial retail and, and other uses, we contemplate hopefully having a daycare facility on this property. We've added that to this preliminary plan to be tested for traffic adequacy and adequacy findings to include such a use. That use will require an additional entitlement under the RPD zone, but we do, we wanted that part of this and tested because we've heard that from the community, so that we at least have that from an adequacy perspective baked in. With that, Mr. Chairman, I think I just start becoming redundant, and you have a very lengthy agenda for which I have two more cases, and I don't want you to get tired of me just yet. So thank you for your indulgence, and we would respectfully request your support of this application.
Let me just say that as I was sitting back listening, and when I was an elected official, I represented that area. And I do understand the fact of the traffic on Piscataway Road in that area in Clinton. So, you know, I am always sympathetic of the residents when they come before this commission. But one of the things that I am pleased to hear, the fact that you had eighteen community meetings throughout this process so far, and that you created a stakeholders group, which, once again, for me, as I've indicated since I've been Chairman of this commission, the fact that it is extremely important that every land use attorney do what you are doing now, and that is taking the time and the effort to listen to the community. And I understand that everybody's not gonna always agree, but the fact that you at least are putting forth the good faith effort, and Ms. Crowell has even attended one or two of your meetings, which was also encouraging for me. The fact that you have put two-point-five million dollars in road improvement, which goes to try to address what Mr. Lenhart was speaking about, and try to resolve some of the traffic concerns and needs, I think it's important that there is never always a total win, but I do believe that there are opportunities that we can also continue to improve as we can continue down this road, if you will. So I, once again, Mr. Tedesco, you are quickly becoming one of my favorites, simply because I think that you are taking your job very seriously, and you are applying the things that, you know what is to be right, and which you have heard from me in short order, that it is extremely important that everyone do what you're doing, and that is listen to the community. That I do not want folks to come in here without saying that someone has tried to touch them or reach out to them. And once again, not to be redundant, but I am very impressed the fact that you have had eighteen-plus community meetings and created a stakeholder group to ensure that this large project, voices are heard from the community. So I thank you for that. And please do not get comfortable, and keep up the same process as we continue to move forward. Are there any other questions for Mr. Tedesco?
I have none. I have none.
CNN, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan PPS dash two-zero-two-three dash zero-one-six, TCP one dash zero-zero-four, dash two-zero-one-five, dash zero-zero-one, variation from section twenty-four dash four-one-zero-two, C one, and variation from section twenty-four dash four-two-zero-five, and variance to section twenty-five dash one-two-two B one G, subject to the conditions outlined in staff's report and is further modified by applicant exhibit number one.
Check it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We have a motion by Commissioner Washington and seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. I would now call the roll. Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
And Mr. Tedesco, I vote aye as well. We will now hear the next agenda item, item number nine, preliminary subdivision, PPS dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-one-three, the Marion's, and we will hear from Ms. Monar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Salmeen Monar with the subdivision section. Item number, number nine on the agenda is preliminary plan of subdivision for the Marion, case number PPS dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-one-three, which proposes thirty-five lots and six parcels for mixed-use development, including four-hundred-and-five multifamily and thirty-five single-family detached dwelling units, and five thousand square feet of commercial use. This application is further subject to an approved certificate of adequacy under case number ADQ dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-three-five. Staff has received two exhibits from the applicant prior to the noon deadline on September ninth, 2025. The additional backup also includes a letter of support from Greater Capital Heights Improvement Corporation, which will also be discussed later in the presentation. Turning to the presentation, the first slide is the aerial image of the proposed subdivision outlined in red. This twenty-six-point-seventeen-acre property is currently wooded, and the only improvement is a Washi, is a Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority railway line for the blue and silver metro, metro lines, which traverses the site from the east to west. The subterranean rail line comes above ground on the east side of the property for about six hundred feet, before going below ground on the adjacent property. The site is located in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Central Avenue and Hill Road. The Morgan Boulevard Metro Station is located approximately one-thousand-two-hundred-feet, one-thousand-two-hundred feet northeast of the property. Next slide, please. The site marked in red is located in Planning Area Seventy-two and Council District Five. Next slide, please. This slide shows that the site contains two zones. Northern, the northern portion of the property is zoned residential, single-family, sixty-five, and the southern portion is zoned commercial, general, and office. The joining properties to the northeast and west across Hill Road are zoned residential, while properties abutting the site to the southeast and south beyond Central Avenue are zoned a local transit-oriented and commercial zones. Next slide, please. The overlay zone map shows that the site is in the military installation overlay, MIO zone for height. Next slide, please. The site map also shows that majority of the site has relatively flat topography. The southwest and northeast portions of the property are identified with steep slopes. Next slide, please. This slide shows the master plan right-ofways in the vicinity of the property. Both the two-thousand-nine-approved countywide master plan of transportation and the two-two-zero-ten-approved subregion for master plan designated Central Avenue, located along the southern, southern boundary of the site, as an aerial roadway, and arterial road, may my apologies, and Hill Road, which abuts subject site to the west, as the collector roadway. Next slide, please. The bird's eye shows the approximate site boundary outlined in red. The property is currently vacant, except for the, except for the metro railway line traversing from west to east. The single-family detached dwelling lies directly to the north. To the southeast lie institutional and commercial use. To the east of the site lie woodlands owned by the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. Next slide, please. This slide shows the two proposed development pods outlined in red. The northern pod includes thirty-five lots proposed for single-family detached residential dwelling units, and the southern pod is proposed for mixed-use development. The slide also highlights the, the existing and proposed public rights-of-way in blue, and the master plan Central Avenue connector trail. Of, of the applicant is proposing to construct the portion located within the property boundary is outlined in purple. The proposed recreation areas are identified with green asterisks, and the primary management area located along the northeastern boundary is outlined in green. Besides the proposed public road for the single-family residential lots, the PPS also shows right-of-way dedication along Central Avenue to meet master plan recommendations. No right-of-way is required along Hill Road. Next slide, please. This slide shows the northern development pod, which consists of single-family residential lots, assessed from Hill Road via a new public road. A portion of the master plan Central Avenue connector trail is proposed to be constructed by the applicant, connecting to, connecting the terminus of the new public road to Hill Road. by the applicant, connecting the terminus of the new public road to Hill Road, where the trail follows the road alignment. The applicant proposes onsite recreational facilities to meet mandatory dedication of parkland requirement, which staff supports. Details of these facilities will be provided with a subsequent detailed site plan. Next slide, please. This slide shows the proposed parcel for multifamily and commercial development. This parcel is located at the intersection of the Central Avenue and Hill Road, and is proposed to have one access each to Hill Road and Central Avenue. The conceptual site plan shows two buildings with central courtyards for recreation amenities. The Central Avenue Connector Trail is proposed along the eastern edge of Hill Road, and terminates in a plaza of the corner of Central Avenue. The alignment and design of this approximately two thousand four hundred and sixty-five foot segment of the CACT will be further developed as part of the detailed site plan review. In accordance with the master plan of transportation and the subregion for master plan, a standard bicycle lane is recommended along the property of Central Avenue. Both Hill Road and Central Avenue are currently improved with standard sidewalks meeting the intent of the master plans. Next slide, please. This slide shows type-one tree conservation plan for the northern pod, with the public rights-of-way in dark blue, the proposed stormwater management facilities in light blue, woodland preservation areas highlighted in light green, and the primary management area in dark green. This slide also shows three of the five specimen trees proposed for removal. Staff analysis and recommendation of the applicant's request for the removal of five specimen trees is presented on pages twenty-three through twenty-seven of the technical staff report. The applicant also requested approval of three impacts on the primary management area, totaling zero point fifteen acres, for the installation of two stormwater management outfalls and a sewer line connection. Staff's analysis and recommendations for these impacts is presented on pages twenty-seven through twenty-nine of the technical staff report. Next slide, please. This slide shows type-one conservation plan for the southern pod, with the public rights-of-way in dark blue, the proposed stormwater management facilities in light blue, and woodland preservation areas highlighted in light green. This slide shows two of the five specimen trees proposed for removal. Next slide, please. This slide shows how the applicant proposes to meet requirements of open space set aside. The proposed open space includes area of active and passive recreation, landscaped areas, stormwater management features, and natural open areas. The requirements of the open space set aside will be further evaluated at the time of detailed site plan. Next slide, please. As mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the additional backup includes an exhibit from the applicant requesting revisions of three conditions recommended by staff. These conditions are related to the requirement for homeowners association, for the ownership and maintenance of common open space parcels, and phasing of the construction of the Central Avenue Connector Trail. Staff has reviewed the applicant's proposed revisions and is in agreement with them. The second exhibit submitted by the applicant documents the community outreach efforts made by the applicant for this project. The third letter in the additional backup is from Greater Capital Heights Improvement Corporation, or GCHIC, expressing their support for this project, but by requesting that some issues related to pedestrian bicycle safety be addressed. GCHIC requests addition of three conditions related to pedestrian and bicycle facilities. GCHIC requests that the planning board require the road frontage improvements along Central Avenue and Hill Road be in accordance with Department of Public Works and Transportation's Urban Street Design Standards, which recommends an eight-to-ten-foot wide sidewalk, and provide ADA-compliant ramps and crossing at all access points. Staff note that the preliminary plan of subdivision was reviewed for conformance with the two thousand nine approved countywide master plan of transportation and the two ten approved subregion for master plan. Staff's analysis is reflected on pages nine through ten of the technical staff report. The recommended improvements in condition thirteen on pages thirty-six and thirty-seven of technical staff report is based upon this review. Staff also note that the permitting agency may modify the road frontage improvement at the time of permits, and may require improvement based upon the Urban Street Design Standards. Condition thirteen E on page thirty-seven of the staff report requires contentional-style crosswalks with Associate Americans with Disabilities Act-compliant curb ramps across all vehicle access points. GCHIC's letter also states that the applicant should provide the planned Central Avenue Connector Trail as a two-way cycle track along the east side of Hill Road within the public right-of-way, consistent with the Urban Street Design Standards. Staff note that this master plan trail is evaluated in the technical staff report on pages eight, nine, and ten. Staff worked with applicant to determine the best possible alignment with the CACT on the subject site, which is also shown on the PPS to be located on the property outside of the public right-of-way and behind the required public utility easement. The trail will be located within a public use easement. Conditions eleven, twelve, and thirteen B recommended by staff ensure that the portion of the master plan trail located on-site is designed in accordance with the design documents approved for the trail and constructed in an established timeframe. GCHIC requests a third condition to be added, requiring a shared-use pedestrian and bicycle path between Hill Road and the Morgan Boulevard Metro Station along the WMATA right-of-way. Staff note that the applicant proposes to design and construct the portion of the Central Avenue Connector Trail located on the subject property. Staff note that the applicant does not own the property between the site and the Morgan Boulevard Metro Station, and thus cannot be required to make off-site improvements. In conclusion, staff recommend that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision PPS dash two zero two four dash zero one three, type-one tree conservation plan TCP one dash zero two zero dash zero two two zero two zero two five, variance to section twenty-five dash one two two B one G, subject to the conditions contained in the technical staff report, and as modified by the applicant's exhibit one. This concludes staff's presentation.
And once again, you did a great job. Are there any questions from the planning board for staff?
I have none.
Mr. Tedesco, before you come up, we need to swear you in once again, and anyone else that will be testifying.
You all raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, or I do. Last time I said I do. I think she's still questioning it. Mr. Chairman, your indulgence for a second. Just need to get my stuff together. Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Matthew Tedesco with the law firm McMeHose in Greenbelt, on behalf of the applicant Morgan Station LLC, represented here today by Mr. George Elias with Middleburg Communities. Mr. Elias is the development manager for Middleburg Communities. I do want to just acknowledge that this is Middleburg Communities' first project in Prince George's County. They have offices in Northern Virginia. We have attracted them across the river and hopefully intend not to let them leave for this very exciting inside-the-beltway redevelopment project. As always, I stand before you on behalf of the applicant, but behind me is a exceptional land planning, development, engineering team made up of Rogers Consulting, represented here today by Mr. Nat Ballard, Jason Staley, who is an expert civil engineer, Rob Swam, our environmental manager, Julie Soss, our landscape architect, although I don't think he's here but maybe on the line, our architects from Niles Bolton and Associates are here, and you'll be hearing more from them when we get before you on the detailed site plan. From Lenhart Traffic and Consulting, Mr. Michael Lenhart. From my office, our senior land planner, Dominique Lockhart. And of course, assisting us with our outreach efforts, GS Proctor and Associates, Mr. Steve Proctor, Monroe Harrison, and Jackie Brown. As I mentioned before, this is Middleburg's first-ever project in Prince George's County. Middleburg's vision is to build a future where access to well-built housing and well-maintained places to live is provided to all, and I submit before you this project is no exception. They have a genuine desire to serve their local communities. They are a vertically integrated real estate investment, development, and construction firm. They self-manage their projects and focus on rental housing. As I mentioned before, a genuine desire to serve their local communities. That was music to my ears, even before Mr. Chairman took over as the planning board chair. It's always been a practice of ours, as well as the GS Proctor team, to do anything and everything we can to ensure sufficient outreach. As I mentioned in other cases before you over the summer, before the recess, can we get to everybody? No, but we do our level best. And to memorialize that and that effort in this case in particular, we provided applicant's exhibit two, which is a three-page document, providing dates and information and summaries of meetings that we've had dating back to early spring, mid-spring 2024. Those meetings included outreach to local members of the community, as well as community leaders, Ms. Belinda Queen on behalf of the Central Coalition. That Central Coalition represents a number of different civic associations within that area, Senator Benson and her Greater Two-O-Two Coalition, all of which is memorialized within that exhibit. You have a very full agenda. I would ask that you take notice of that exhibit, to save me the trouble of reading it line by line, and I think the folks in the audience would prefer that I not, but I did, we did want to make sure that you and the board were well aware of the extensive outreach that has gone on and will continue to go on, to the point of even yesterday getting phone calls from some of the residents on Mountain View Drive, which is the single-family detached residence just to the north of this property. Obviously, they are probably the most impacted and most concerned of the residents that we've been talking to. They've grown accustomed to that woodland and that buffer, I would say, from Central Avenue, as well as from the Morgan Station Boulevard, and obviously, the news of some of that woodland being removed, obviously, it comes as surprising. As we've always tried to explain, we understand change can be hard, especially for folks that purchase homes believing and understanding that those woods would be there forever. And I can relate to that, having my childhood home, the woods next door being taken down for an assisted living facility. Mr. Norman Rivera, I can thank for that. But nevertheless, we are developing this property inside the beltway, next to a metro station. It is transit-oriented development. It is consistent with the master plan and the general plan. It is in keeping with the zoning of that area and that property. To that end, the project is fully consistent with Plan 2035. The western portion of the property lies within the established community's growth policy area, where context-sensitive infill is encouraged, and the eastern portion lies in the Morgan Boulevard Metro Local Transit Center, where Plan 2035 directs medium-to-high-density housing, limited commercial uses, further supported by the existing and/or proposed adjacent commercial uses in the immediate area. The proposal before you implements these policies by providing a mix of housing within the metro center, lower-density single-family units on the north pursuant to the RSF sixty-five zone, and the balance of the site being multifamily in the currently CGO zone. The two thousand and ten subregion for master plan recommends mixed-use commercial land use for the site. The plan delivers that recommendation, creating a diverse transit-supportive development that enhances the surrounding corridor, for which we all know that that corridor is starting to realize some new redevelopment, which we are excited about. I know the community is long-awaited for. Oftentimes, we hear that certain portions inside the beltway have been forgotten. We are happy to stand before you to say that not this corridor. And we are here to implement, hopefully, the future vision for the Blue Line Corridor Sector Plan that is currently making its way through the process. The project was reviewed for compliance with the Woodland Wildlife Habitat Conservation Ordinance. The type-one tree conservation plan provides nineteen point one six acres of woodland conservation that will be met with preservation, afforestation, and off-site credits. Impacts to regular environmental features are minimal and unavoidable, limited to two stormwater outfalls and a sanitary sewer connection totaling just zero point one five acres. An approved stormwater management concept plan includes bio-retention facilities, submerged gravel wetlands, and underground storage. Staff have confirmed that the preliminary plan fully satisfies subtitle twenty-four and subtitle twenty-seven environmental requirements. The plan is consistent with the master plan of transportation. It provides dedication of required rights-of-ways along Maryland two fourteen and Hill Road, a new internal public road serving the single-family neighborhood, sidewalks on both sides of all streets marked crosswalks, trail connections, and two thousand four hundred and sixty-five foot segment of the Central Avenue Connector Trail, CACT, integrated into the site. It satisfies a connectivity score of two point six three, when the requirement was one point five. Parks and Recreation, I do need, in addition to thanking your subdivision staff, and I will say, Ms. Monar is pinching here today, and I want to thank her for her review and her summary of this case. We also met quite regularly with your Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as your transportation planning staff, as it relates to the CACT. That's one of the main benefits of this project, as far as what does this project do for the local community. It provides a much-needed and highly-desirable trail connection that hopefully one day will be connected to the Morgan Boulevard Metro Station. As staff indicated, we do not own the property just immediately to the east. There is a gap. There's some topography there, but everyone is actively working on bridging that gap, no pun intended, for this trail to be connected to that metro site, which we strongly encourage, and it's why my client was willing to take on the obligation of connecting, or excuse me, constructing the trail on our property, primarily over the Womata easement. So in lieu of land dedication, the preliminary plan provides private onsite recreational facilities that exceed the required value. It includes play areas, dog run, outdoor seating on the multifamily portion, play and sitting areas for the single-family neighborhood portion, and as I mentioned before, more importantly, the Central Avenue Connector Trail segment, which will serve both the community and the broader public via public use easement. Staff has confirmed that this satisfies the mandatory parkland dedication of the code. This application is supported by a certificate of adequacy, and all public facilities have been met. This preliminary plan is consistent with Plan 2035, conforms with the subregion for master plan, and meets the requirements of section twenty-four four one zero one. It complies with the subdivision regulations of subtitle twenty-four, the applicable zoning ordinance, subtitle twenty-seven, the applicable requirements of the woodland conservation ordinance, and all adequate public facilities have been met. We believe that this application advances the goals for trans-oriented development. It provides high-quality housing, retail, and recreational amenities, preserves and protects significant environmental resources, and meets every applicable finding of fact and conclusion of law that required by the code. Turning to the exhibit three that was submitted into the record from the Greater Capital Heights Improvement Corporation, Mr. Bradley Hurd. I spoke to Mr. Hurd a number of times. I want to thank him publicly for him and his organization's support of this application. Want to thank him for the proposed conditions for your consideration. I agree with staff in its summary of those with respect to the conditions that are already before you and recommended by staff. I won't reiterate those. I will also just highlight for you and the public and Mr. Hurd that the detailed site plan for the multifamily component, this, I'm remiss, this will be a phased project. We will have a detailed site plan for the multifamily coming before you, hopefully in a few months, and then later on down the road, we'll have a subsequent detailed site plan for the phase two, the back portion of the property. That detailed site plan that's pending and will be before you for the multifamily includes a more refined CACT trail. a more refined CACT trail that is reflective of numerous meetings and feedback from many among your staff, including Transportation Planning and Department of Parks and Rec. This more refined trail segment in detail will ultimately meet most of what Mr. Hurd has requested in his written exhibit. And just to conclude on that note, Mr. Chairman, with respect to Mr. Hurd's, in addition to what staff indicated with its recommended conditions 13, 11, and 12, I just wanted to also reiterate a couple of things. The detailed site plan does show a seven-foot grass buffer associated with the sidewalk and the 12-foot-wide CACT, additional buffering with a five-foot sidewalk along Hill Road, along 214. For anybody that is familiar with this corridor, within the last 12 to 18 months, I would say, fairly, probably an understatement, significant utility poles have been constructed along Central Avenue. These are the massive steel, high-tension power lines. Those are along our frontage, which has limited our ability to do many, some of the design elements that we wanted to do, but also limit our ability to really do much with that sidewalk along Central Avenue. So we are proposing a five-foot-wide sidewalk, obviously subject to SHA, but there really is just no opportunity to do anything wider, just because of those very significant transmission lines that are along the frontage of the property. Regarding Mr. Hurd's item number two, the CACT is being provided in a public use easement and will be constructed consistent with the 30% plans for the CACT. And finally, with respect to Mr. Hurd's third item, the CACT mostly is within the Womata right-of-way, which is intentional and desired by the Department of Parks and Recreation, and will also be in a public use easement for all those portions of it that are not within a right-of-way, a public right-of-way. So we do, I would agree with staff. I think that your recommendations of staff, as well as the information that may not be before you on this application, but will be before you with the detailed site plan, more than address Mr. Hurd's requests. And with that, I think we have papered that quite sufficiently. I know, Mr. Hurd, I've requested if his conditions were not carried for, he wanted some discussion on that, so I hope that satisfies that requirement and/or need. Mr. Chairman, with that, we would submit and incorporate and adopt all of our justification statements as further testimony. We do have a number of experts here, if there are any questions that they need to address, but I will submit on that and reserve any further time of rebuttal, and happy to answer any questions.
I just have one question. How many transmission lines are on that property?
Along our frontage? How many poles?
Yep.
I think, I think three to four. I'd have to do a street view, but I think.
Yeah, well, by the time you come back up.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that answer for you.
Because you stated something in regards to the sidewalk, that it, because of those transmission lines and the poles, are preventing you guys from building on the sidewalk or that frontage.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, widening it. So, yeah, the staff has recommended a five-foot sidewalk, subject to SHA. Obviously, if SHA has other thoughts, we have to conform, but yeah.
So, yeah, by the time you come back, if you let me know, how many?
Yes, sir. Will do.
I believe everyone that is with you are in support of this, and I believe there's only one in opposition, Catherine Roman. She's not here?
She is. Catherine. Ms. Roman.
She here? Okay. Then, there's no one speaking in opposition. Mr. Tedesco, you want to come back up?
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, there are three of those utility lines, those very large steel utility poles along the frontage.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we have nothing further. We would respectfully request the board's approval of this application, and we look forward to presenting future applications for you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Tedesco? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan PPS-2024-013, TCP-1-020-2025, varies, and variance to Section 25-122B1G, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further amended by applicant Exhibit Number One.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you so much, Mr. Tedesco. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number 10. Preliminary plan for Subdivision 4-25004 Oxon Hill Hotel. Ms. Monar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, I am Salmeen Monar with the subdivision section. Item number 10 on the agenda is preliminary plan of subdivision for Oxon Hill Hotel, case number 4-25004, which proposes one parcel for development of 160-room hotel. This application is further subject to an approved certificate of adequacy under case number ADQ-2025-007. This case was continued from the planning board hearing date of July 31, 2025, to September 11, 2025. Staff have not received any exhibit or correspondence prior to the noon deadline on September 9, 2025. In conclusion, subdivision staff recommend that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision 4-25004 Oxon Hill Hotel and variation from Section 24-121A3, subject to the conditions contained in the technical staff report. This concludes staff presentation.
Are there any questions from the planning board for staff?
I have no questions here.
Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Hiller.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Thomas Haller, I'm attorney with offices here in Largo, here on behalf of the property owner, which is Oxon Hotel LLC. The principal of Oxon Hotel LLC, Mr. Neil Patel, is on the line, signed up virtually. And then I also have with me Mr. Mark Johnston with our engineering firm of Gutcheck, Little and Weber, as well as Mr. Mike Lenhart, who's our traffic consultant.
Yes, sir.
If we could have all those who intend on testifying in this item to raise their right hands, and online, if you can turn your camera on and do the same. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. As staff indicated, they've recommended approval with conditions, and we have not submitted any additional information. We are in fully support of the staff's recommended conditions as written. We have no proposed changes. I just want to note, as you can see from the aerial photograph, this property is within a commercial strip along Oxon Hill Road. Many of you, if you know this area, are familiar with the office buildings that are constructed along there. This particular property is directly across from the Rivertown Commons Shopping Center, and it is 50 years old, the building is. The building is not in good shape. It's old, it's now fenced, it's been vandalized. The owners purchased the property with the thought of providing, replacing it with a hotel. As you note in the backup, there was a special exception approved a few years ago to allow the existing building to be converted to a hotel. That special exception, excuse me, that detailed site plan was in place when my client purchased the property, but not only is the building in poor shape, but it is built on a parking deck, which you really can't tell from Oxon Hill Road, but there's actually underground parking, and that is also in poor shape. And so in order to develop a hotel on this property, the existing building needs to be razed and the new hotel constructed. As a result of needing to remove the existing building and build a new building, it triggered the requirement to file a preliminary plan of subdivision, which is the application that's before you today. The construction of the hotel still will require approval of a detailed site plan, and so we will be back with the detailed site plan to proceed forward with this application. And so this is the first step in a two-step process, but we're happy to be here. I do want to mention one other thing. Staff noted the variation. The property only has frontage on Oxon Hill Road, which is an arterial roadway, and therefore we need a variation in order to access it. But I do want to note that this, the entrance to this office building is at the traffic signal going into Rivertown Commons Shopping Center. And so that traffic signal regulates traffic coming in and out of this property, and the access to that shopping center also extends to the office building to the east, so that the occupants of that building do not have, can come through our parking lot and get to the traffic signal. So the only access that we have to Oxon Hill Road is at that signal, and we've requested a variation to retain that access. Staff is recommending support of that. I have no further comments. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hiller?
Do we know the brand of the hotel?
We do not. I do not have that information at this time. He has worked with certain brands in the past, but we haven't identified a flag for this particular hotel.
There are no ones present in opposition, and I believe everyone on your side is.
In support.
In support of. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan 4-15004, and variation from Section 24-121A3, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number 11. Preliminary plan of subdivision 4-24032, Pinmar Shopping Center. I will now open the hearing. We will have staff member Jason Bartlett, who will present this item, as well as the applicant's attorney, Peter Goldsmith, to discuss the item. We will hear from staff. Mr. Bartlett.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, I am Jason Bartlett with the subdivision section. Item number 11 on the agenda is preliminary plan of subdivision for Pinmar Shopping Center, case number 4-24032, which proposes 15 parcels for existing commercial development. This application is supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, case number ADQ-2024-061. This case was continued from the planning board hearing date of July 24, 2025, to today, September 11. Before I begin, and as a matter of housekeeping, four items of additional material were submitted prior to the noon deadline on September 9. The additional material is entered into the record as applicants Exhibit One through four. Applicants Exhibit One is a requested revision to two of the recommended conditions of approval that staff is in agreement with. Applicants Exhibit Two is a minor revision to the layout of the subdivision that adds an out parcel, which staff is also in agreement with. Applicants Exhibit Three is an environmental statement of justification submitted by the applicant in justification of five impacts requested to the primary management area as shown on applicants Exhibit Four. All of these items will be further discussed in this brief presentation. As noted on the aerial image currently being displayed, this is an existing development containing the Pinmar Shopping Center, which has stood for over 60 years. It is situated on the east side of Donnell Drive between Marlboro Pike and Pennsylvania Avenue. Mr. Flanagan, if you could go to slide eight. As it is currently configured, the Pinmar Shopping Center consists of five parcels that the applicant is requesting to be subdivided into 15 parcels. This slide reflects the configuration of the proposed parcels as of the publishing of the technical staff report. Existing buildings are highlighted in yellow, public right-of-ways are shown in blue with property boundaries and proposed parcel layouts outlined in red. All access points are existing and proposed to remain and are identified by black arrows. No additional access points are proposed with this application, and no roadway dedication is required. Next slide, please. Subsequent to publishing the technical staff report and prior to the noon deadline on September 9, the applicant worked with staff to request a minor revision to the parcel layout reflected on this slide, which is applicant's Exhibit B entered into the record as applicant's Exhibit Two, which adds an additional parcel as out parcel one. Staff's agreement to this revised layout was contingent, however, upon the addition of a condition that would ensure continued access to the existing shopping center over proposed out parcel one by establishing an access easement. That additional condition is reflected in applicant's Exhibit One as proposed condition five. Also shown on this slide is an existing primary management area, or PMA, highlighted in pink, though existing impacts to this PMA include the buildings on parcel 18 and 19, as well as parking and landscaping. If you could give me one minute, I'd appreciate it. Seem to have lost a page of my script. So, as I was saying, also shown on this slide is an existing primary management area, or PMA, highlighted in pink, though existing impacts to this PMA include the buildings on parcel 18 and 19, as well as parking, landscaping, and sidewalks along the frontage of parcel 15 through 19, for a total of five impacts. In accordance with Subtitle 24-130B5 of the subdivision regulations, these PMA impacts must be approved by the planning board, and applicants Exhibit Three and Four provide justification for those impacts which staff is in agreement with and recommend the planning board approve. Next slide, please. In conclusion, the subdivision staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve the preliminary plan of subdivision 4-24032, Pinmar Shopping Center, as modified by applicant's Exhibit B entered into the record as applicant's Exhibit Two, as well as the five impacts of the PMA in accordance with Subtitle 24-130B5, and as entered into the record as applicants Exhibits Three and Four, and subject to the findings and conditions in the technical staff report to include the addition of Condition 1K and Condition Five in accordance with applicants Exhibits One and Two. This concludes staff's presentation, and my apologies for a little faux pas.
It happens to me all the time. Are there any questions for staff?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartlett, you were actually going in and out when you were summing up your summary of requested approvals. Could you repeat that one more time, please?
Preliminary plan 4-24032, as modified by applicant's Exhibit B, which was entered into the record as applicant's Exhibit Two, as well as the five impacts to the.
Okay, Mr. Bartlett, I have applicant Exhibit Number One. That's what was shared with us, though we don't, we don't have any Alpha Exhibits. I guess that's what's a little confusing.
The applicant titled the exhibit Exhibit B, which is how it appears in the slide. Their Exhibit B would be Exhibit Two. It's entered into the record as Exhibit Two. Exhibits Three and Four were the SOJ for the PMA impacts, and, or Three was the SOJ, and Four was the exhibit of the SOJ. So Three and Four are related to the SOJ.
So what are we calling the exhibit that has the revision to staff's report? It's labeled applicant Exhibit A, but it was. It's labeled applicant exhibit A, but it was sent to us labeled applicant exhibit one. I don't have anything that shows applicant exhibit B.
It's Exhibit One. A would be one, B is two, B is reflected in the presentation on slide nine.
Okay, so you're recommending amendments to your conditions based on applicant exhibit number one, in addition to approving applicant, accepting applicant's exhibit three and four to address the impact, the PMA impacts that you discussed. Is that correct?
Yes, which we are also recommending approval of those impacts.
Got it.
In accordance with applicant's exhibits three and four.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
You're welcome. Sorry about that confusion.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Bartlett? Saying none, Mr. Goldsmith, before you come up, legal will swear you in. And anyone else?
If there are anyone, all members who are going to talk to this item, can you raise your right hands? You swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth.
I do. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Peter Goldsmith, a law firm Lurch Early and Brewer. We have the offices in Bowie. Here on behalf of the applicant, Penmar Improvements LLC, which is the new owner of the Penmar Shopping Center. They are an affiliate of DLC Management, which is a preeminent owner, operator, and manager of shopping centers around the country. Here with DLC is Jack Rosenkranz, their vice president of redevelopment. We also have Ken Dunn and David Bickel with Soltes, a civil engineering firm who worked on this project. Our traffic consultant is Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic. And we're all, they're all here to answer any technical questions that the board may have. I want to thank Mr. Bartlett for regularly communicating with us, as he always does, make sure that everything was in order. This is a fairly straightforward application in which the applicant is simply requesting a reparsaling of the existing shopping center to reposition it for the future. The applicant is not proposing any development at this time, and we are in complete agreement with staff and the proposed new conditions, which are just merely a result of our collaboration with staff, just to ensure that we protected the interests of all future owners and current owners of the parcels. The general discussion of the primary management area is a little unusual, because we're not really discussing the protection of any highly sensitive environmental features. The, essentially, the existing flood controls in the area, many of them are off-site and are contributing to this, but they can't handle a hundred-year floodplain event. And so, you know, the drainage area for this particular inlet is like fifty acres. This has been explained to me by our engineers. And the amount of water coming from uphill impervious surfaces with, that currently have no hundred-year control facilities, combined with whatever water that's coming up from the inlet, from the inlet, from other upstream pipes, is kind of enough to overwhelm the public infrastructure in the right of way. So that create, that will create some kind of backup event onto the existing parking lot, which is depicted in the sketch. And so that, essentially, that backwater event is, according to DEPI, is a hundred-year floodplain elevation. And so, you know, typically, we would need approval for any development in the PMA. However, since there's already existing buildings and parking that have been in place for years, we're just requesting permission to allow these very minor impacts to continue. And, you know, if the county upgrades the system in the future or the infrastructure, I think the issue would be, would essentially be resolved. And it'd be a completely different conversation we would be having if we were not talking about a shopping center that's been around for decades, and instead that we, like we were talking about wetlands or floodplains in a wooded area, but that's not the case right now. And I just realized that this may, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that, or if we, we have our team here to answer any technical questions, but I think that issue's pretty straightforward. But I just realized that this may be the last time that I have the opportunity to appear before Commissioner Washington, and, who I can't see, but I know she's on a screen behind me. So, and so if it is, I just want to make sure that she knows that I am really grateful for the opportunity. I had to work with, work with her and the board on that side of the dais, and I feel equally privileged to have had the opportunity to stand here at the podium before her. And I look forward to running into you down the road and maybe at a community meeting sometime. But in the words of the great, in the words of the great Deborah Borden, you really do make great motions. And, you know, and you can tell that because you were trying to sort through my mess that I created when I sent that email with the exhibit, so we really appreciate you setting that straight. And I think you have it straight, of course, so.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsmith.
If the board has no questions, we do ask that she vote in favor and approve the preliminary plan of subdivision. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Goldsmith, let me say that I concur with you that she will sorely be missed. In my short period of time here, I have grown a true affection for Ms. Washington, and she does do a good job. So I tried to convince her to stay around, but she says life goes on, and I agree with that. I believe that the applicant's team is here in support of this building. I see no one in opposition. Are there any questions for Mr. Goldsmith?
I have no.
No question.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion, and I thank you all for your kind and generous comments. And with that, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan four dash two four zero three two, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report. In addition to approving the recommended impacts as supported by applicant exhibit number three and four, and I would ask staff to consult with counsel to ensure the language adequately reflects the intent of the board with regards to the impact language, and ensure that's reflected in the final resolution.
That's a perfectly correction.
Yes.
The conditions, the revised conditions as detailed by applicant-
Oh, applicant exhibit number one. I'm sorry, I thought I said that.
Your pardon.
Okay.
Say it again.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan four dash two four zero three two, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further modified by applicant exhibit number one. In addition to approving the recommended impacts as supported by applicant exhibits number three and four, and again, asking staff to consult with counsel to ensure that the language regarding the impacts is appropriately reflected in the final resolution.
Second.
The layout was revised by applicant's exhibit two.
And please include that in your resolution also, please.
I can't, I can't hear whoever's speaking.
This is Muridla Gupta with the subdivision section. Commissioner Washington, the lot layout also was revised by applicant's exhibit two. See if you can please include that also in your motion.
Okay. You guys, this is really confusing. We'll add-
Pardon.
-the motion to reflect the condition revisions to applicant exhibit number two.
We get the idea.
According to my records, is a vicinity map.
Yes, we get the idea. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you so much, Mr. Goldsmith.
Thank you very much.
We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number twelve, preliminary plan subdivision four dash two four zero three five, JPRE Commercial Office Building. We will now hear from staff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Mahsa Vatindus with the subdivision section. Item number twelve on the agenda is a preliminary plan of subdivision for JPRE Commercial Office Building, case number four dash two four zero three five. The subject project proposes one parcel for fourteen thousand and three hundred and seventy-two square feet of commercial development. The project is supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, ADQ dash two zero two four dash zero six eight. This project was continued from July thirty-first, twenty twenty, two thousand twenty-five planning board hearing to today, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Staff has not received any exhibits or correspondence prior to the noon deadline on September ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Based on the findings presented in the technical staff report, the subdivision staff recommends that the planning board approve the preliminary plan of subdivision four dash two four zero three five and type one tree conservation plan, TCP one dash zero one zero dash two zero two five, variation from section twenty-four dash one two one eight three, and a variance to section twenty-five dash one two two B one G, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. This concludes the staff's presentation. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the planning board for staff?
No questions from me.
No questions.
If not, Mr. Tedesco.
Ms. Coleman, do I need a?
Please, finally swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth.
I do. Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the third and final time today, Mr. Matt Tedesco with the law firm of McHosey here on behalf of the applicant, JP Real Estate Holdings, Maryland LLC, represented online by Mr. Julian Park. With the civil engineering firm of Dynamic Engineering, Jake Jarboe is on the line, and Mr. Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Traffic Consulting is here, and Ms. Dominique Lockhart with my firm is our senior land planner as well. Mr. Chairman, having taken up the lion's share of today's hearing, I will make this very, very brief. This case is very straightforward. I want to thank Ms. Vatindus and the subdivision section's review, as well as the transportation planning section's staff's review. The ADQ has been approved, and this application really, and Mr. Park doesn't need to testify, but if he were, he will tell you, he purchased his property to develop it as a commercial office building for his wife, who is an orthodontist, to open up an orthodontist's office. And he was surprised to find out that he couldn't just pull a permit and build an office building for his wife. And so we are, we have commenced with this preliminary plan of subdivision, given the history of the lots, which are laid out in your staff report, the square footage, pre-1970s, all the requirements. It triggered the need for a preliminary plan of subdivision, which is now before you. So we would respectfully submit on your technical staff report. We agree with all the recommended findings and conclusions, as well as the recommended conditions. We have no applicant exhibits in this case. We are in full agreement with the recommended, recommended conditions of approval. And with that, we would respectfully request the board's approval of this preliminary plan of subdivision.
I see no one in opposition on this. Are there any questions for Mr. Tedesco?
No.
Saying none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan four dash two four zero three five, TCP one dash zero one zero dash two zero two five, variation from section twenty-four dash one two one eight three, and variance to section twenty-five dash one two two B one G, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number thirteen, preliminary plan of subdivision four dash two five zero zero two, Troutman Property. Mr. Bartlett.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, I am Jason Bartlett with the subdivision section. Item number thirteen on the agenda is a preliminary plan of subdivision four dash two five zero zero two, titled Troutman Property. This subdivision proposes sixty-five lots, two parcels, and nine parcel, two out parcels and nine parcels for sixty-five single-family dwellings, and thirty, thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-four square feet of equestrian recreational facility. This application is supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, case number ADQ dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero two. This case was continued from the planning board hearing date of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, to today, September eleventh. As a matter of housekeeping, the additional backup includes six exhibits submitted by the applicant prior to Tuesday's noon deadline, and are entered into the record as applicant's exhibits one through six. Applicant's exhibit one is a request for a revision to two of the recommended conditions of approval that staff is in agreement with. Applicant's exhibits three through six are resumes of the applicant's engineering team and two of their consultants that are present today as expert witnesses. Applicant's exhibit two is a revised type one tree conservation plan with an updated woodland conservation worksheet that was requested by staff prior to the planning board approval, as noted in the environmental findings of the technical staff report. This exhibit indicates that the woodland conservation requirement is proposed to be satisfied with a combination of onsite woodland preservation and a fee in lieu. However, section twenty-five dash one two two sets forth criteria for using fee in lieu to meet this requirement. The applicant shall provide the requisite documentation in conformance with this section at the time of type two tree conservation plan application. As such, staff recommends that condition twelve C be deleted, since this condition has been satisfied. In conclusion, next slide. I'm sorry, last slide, please. In conclusion, based on the findings presented in the technical staff report, staff recommends the planning board approve this preliminary plan of subdivision four dash two five zero zero two, type one tree conservation plan, TCP one dash zero one five dash twenty twenty-five, and variation from section twenty-five dash one two two B one G for the removal of twenty-nine specimen trees, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report, as revised by applicant's exhibit one of additional backup and with the deletion of condition twelve C. This concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions from the planning board for staff?
I have none.
Saying none, we will now hear from Mr. Horn. Before you start, we need to swear you in, and anyone else that may testify.
Stand up.
All individuals who intend on providing testimony in this item, if you stand up, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth?
It is.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning board, for the record, Arthur Horn with Law Offices of shipping Horn in Largo, Maryland. Very pleased to be here this afternoon on this pre-Commanders football game afternoon. So I know I will be not too long. I'm here representing the Troutman family, represented by Ms. Sandra Troutman Wiseman and Ms. Diana Troutman Hickcock, who are the owners of the property. Mr. Tom Matea, who is their development consultant, is here, former vice president of Toll Brothers and expert in equestrian development. We have with us, from Soltes, the landscape architects and civil engineers, Ken Dunn, David Bickel, and Phil Isaiah. As mentioned, their resumes have been placed in the record, just in case there's need for testimony here today. Traffic engineer, Mr. Michael Lenhart, who's been planted here all day today, shows you his talent and abilities. And shipping Horn's land planner, Mr. Andrew Shelley, is with us here today. Mr. Chairman, we agree with staff's recommendations and conditions. We had a few edits, as was mentioned here, by Mr. Bartlett, and we agree with that with reference to exhibit two that was- reference to exhibit two, that was the TCP1. It was contemplated that the applicant would in fact seek the, be in order, the way of handling woodland conservation, in that onsite, onsite first, offsite second, fee-in lieu third. And, and so, we didn't state that originally, so we resubmitted it in our TCP1, and we will follow that order. So, let me, of course, thank Mr. Bartlett for his presentation. He stepped up after former parking planning member Ben Sullivan, a guest who's no longer working here. And as usual, Ms. Gupta and Ms. Connor were very helpful and available throughout the preliminary plan application process. Because of the very uniqueness of this case, about about a variant interpretations concerning this application, we had almost a half a dozen meetings with the environmental section, and Mr. Alex Kirchhoff, and in his absence, Ms. Nichols, Mr. Tom Burke, and Ms. Katina Schulters, all of them, as per usual, were extremely professional and extremely respectful to us as the applicant's position, which on occasions differed from what theirs were. The applicant would also like to extend its experience of appreciation to the planning director, Ms. Hope, for actually personally meeting with the applicants during this process. Mr. Chair, I understand, or I see that there's one person present who is not a part of the applicant's team who may be signed up to speak, so I will reserve if that person has signed up to come back and speak. However, before I do that, I do just want to take, if I can ask for your indulgence, just three to five minutes, just to give a little general background about the uniqueness of this case. I think it's important, even though I'm not addressing specifically the preliminary plan, which we agree on, but I do think it's important to mention some of these factors, because they're going to come back to play at the time of the detailed site plan. So with your indulgence, I just want to say, and I do apologize if you are familiar with this information, but just by way of a brief history, Prince George's County's equestrian industry goes back to the mid-18th century. There's a rich equine history in the state of Maryland, and in particular, Prince George's County, perhaps rivalled by only the state of Kentucky. As the centrals has passed by, Prince George's County grew in population and began to move away from their main industries, which used to be tobacco, farming, and carton harvesting, and the horse industry. Though tobacco farming and cotton growing industry have ended, Prince George's County has nevertheless focused on maintaining its rich history of equestrian operations. One such individual who led the way in preserving the county's horse rearing and accessory horse racing legacy was a lady named Dorothy Troutman, who along with her family, who are the applicants here today, owned a 202-acre farm that is the subject for this application. Ms. Troutman passed away just last year, 24, at the age of 101, very much sound of mind and body, and very much active in this application. She was the undisputed, recognized leader of the renaissance of the equestrian industry in Prince George's County. Some of the veteran parking planning staff and even planning board members knew her well, that she would appear before this board as a community activist and visionary. Local historians also know, if it wasn't for the tenacity and leadership of Ms. Troutman, there would be no Showplace Arena in Upper Marlboro. She's responsible for that. That Showplace Arena is the envy of the equestrian world on the entire East Coast. Have you ever noticed the picture of the horse on the water tile that's out there as you head into Upper Marlboro in the Showplace Arena? Yes, that was the lobbying of Ms. Dorothy Troutman. Very adept in land use and zoning, Ms. Troutman lobbied the county council to establish legislation that would make higher-density residential housing combined with equestrian uses in certain zones. The result created two of the most beautiful developments we have here in the county. One is the equestrian development at Marlboro Ridge in Upper Marlboro, and I hope you all have been there and seen that. And the other, believe it or not, is Woodmore. Woodmore with a country club and a golf course. The same legislation that Ms. Troutman initiated for the equestrian residential development was used by the developer to have a mixture of housing development as the type associated with a golf course in that particular Woodmore. So when they saw she was putting forth that legislation, they attached to it, and because of that, we have Woodmore, fine, beautiful community. The equestrian facility that's on the subject site has existed for decades, has taught generations of county residents, especially children, to ride horses. It has a sophisticated indoor riding arena for competition. This application is an effort to impart, keep that long-serving equestrian facility privately owned by her family operational, while allowing for additional single-family detached homes, just like the homes directly adjacent and adjoining the property, to be, to be built on this site as contemplated by the master plan in this area. Just as Ms. Troutman showed the county a legislative way to accomplish equestrian-desire communities, the county council, yes, even members on the current county council, initiated legislation CB 81 2021, which recognized the uniqueness of this particular site and provided for legislative guide in the planning board, a legislative guide to the planning board towards the direction of achieving the preservation of this equestrian facility. The council reaffirmed this desire in affirming the water sewer application in CR 17 of 2022. What has been a vision to be able to move forward has been slow, but not tabled. There's been lots of legitimate debate concerning the council's intent in this specific and unique equestrian development, while integrating state and local policies concerning woodland conservation. The debate will continue through the depail site plan process, as complications and proceeding under the old ordinance, while being held to requirements under the new ordinance, is perhaps demonstrating the need for future legislative fixes for some unintended consequences. One thing's for sure, in developing upon the establishment of the farm originally, the Troutmans created separate parcels with street connections to the future development upon adjoining properties, which will later become the Queensland Residential Development and the Maryville Resident Communities. As both, as both of these developments occurred, they were provided with stub road access for the farm, so that connectivity could, could happen in the future. The subject properties where the proposed houses are located in this application are adjacent to the Queensland Development and meeting with the community. The applicants were made well aware of the residence community, that the issues that the residents of Queensland face, and mostly that's transportation-related. This application's approved ADQ provides a proposed remedy for traffic signalization subject, subject to the SHA's approval, not only to benefit this application, but to benefit all the Queensland community, and the overall positive effect on traffic flow on Route 301 in the median area. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your indulgence, and allowing us to state that background. I think that's important, because this is not just a regular application, it is an application to continue to preserve and build on the equestrian developments here in Prince George's County. It's an effort that was led by this family, and we appreciate the support that they've received today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I appreciate the history lesson. I believe the team that you have assembled are all in support, and there's only one in opposition, Ms. Saunders.
Okay, let me clarify something. Ms. Saunders was not in opposition. I said, if Y Street was going to.
You want to come up to the podium, plus you need to.
Yes, and he just tries to help me more than he can. Do I have to raise my hand and solemnly tell the truth?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I swear. Okay, so this is what I.
You have to put yourself with the record.
Say it again. Oh, my name is Constance Saunders, and I asked, when I first came in, if I needed to sign up, in case I heard something that I was opposed to. So I didn't hear anything. I've been here all day from 2:30, and we were last. I didn't hear anything that I was opposed to. Thank you very much. So, I decline to say anything.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan 4-25002, TCP1-015-2025, and variance to Section 25-122B1G, subject to the conditions as outlined in staff's report, with the exception of Condition 12(c), which shall be deleted, and the conditions as further revised by applicant exhibit number one.
Second?
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Saunders. This concludes all items for today's agenda. The meeting is now adjourned.